Evening and welcome to the November 17th Board of Education meeting. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals. Philip Fielding, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kelly Clary, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Earl, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Jack Murphy, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. No, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Gloria Han, a graduate of the North Syracuse. Time we are going to fill the vacancies that we have worked from. Well Schuster and Cheryl McDonald, so we will. I'll make a recommendation that we appoint Michael Schuster to fill the vacant board seat by Xavier Moody-Wusick and appoint Cheryl McDonald to fill the vacant board seat left open by Dr. Beth Kramer effective immediately in accordance with the board bylaws and applicable law with the following rule.
Hi.
And we'll have our district clerk.
I, Cheryl McDonald, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United arts and the duties of board member of the Board of Education. That's my ability.
Thank you, Jill.
Bill and welcome to both of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
At this motion, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to move into purpose of reviewing one personal matter with no action to follow. Can I have a second? All those in favor?
I saw the name.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like a motion to reconvene the meeting and a permit on favor. Frizzio needed to be excused, I will remember how to do this. Riding a bike, which I don't know that I remember how to do. We started like to welcome, we have two new board members over here filling some vacancies for us. We have, right, and Mr. Mike Chu. Welcome them, yes. Why that, because you will not get other applause. Thank you for willing, being willing. So, we are at the point here with the presentation, we have performers from Clue. So this will be the highlight of this meeting, I think, everything else, so go ahead.
Hi, good evening everyone, I'd like to introduce you to our senior members of our Clue show. We have, I'll start down here, Ms. Peacock. Mr. Plum. Professor Plum, excuse me, so sorry. He did lose his license, that's true. Ms. Scarlett. Our singing Telegram girl. And Wadsworth. Come on right up here, you guys. Along with, the cast and crew of Clue. We're very excited to present this, this year. We've been wanting to do this for quite a few years, but with the renovations, we haven't been able to. And now we are. They're not shy, really, I promise. They'd all like to say hello.
My goodness.
To see her, right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My son did that at the high school, long time ago. Good for you, good for you. And what do you do? Good for you, thank you. Officer, thank you.
This is subpoena or something.
You've been served.
I can't wait to see it. I've heard like, nothing but good stuff. I've heard nothing but good stuff about the play that's coming.
When my, my son graduated from here in 99, he was always part of that lighting crew. He loved that stuff.
Oh, I can't wait to go see it.
Hey, next we have student recognition, so Mr. Red.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. This is one of the best parts of my job, is being able to take a few minutes and see the members of the board. And share out some of the great things that are going on within our fine arts program. Obviously, Clue, I can't wait to see the show, and they look wonderful, and the set is amazing. Everything is off and running very well. This is a different activity, this is the students that are in our music performing program. And across the state, there are local activities, regional activities, and also the statewide activities. And each one of those is the next level up, as far as demonstrating skills and ability to perform at an extremely high level. And we have four students that will be recognized tonight for achieving what is the highest level within the state, which is being accepted into Conference Allstate, which is sponsored by the New York State School of Music Association, also better known as NISMIA. These students have been working for years to get to this level. Often, the high school is the place that all eyes look, but as we know, education is a K through 12 process. And the teachers that have come before them have put them into great positions, and given them the opportunities and skills to be able to achieve at this high level. So, this evening, I would like to recognize four students, as I said earlier. Three of them are able to be here this evening, and we do have certificates. So when I call your name, please come up and be recognized. Abigail Gable, who is performing in the symphonic band at Conference Allstate on French horn.
Yeah, there you are.
Congratulations, thank you. Next, Christian Record. He will be performing at Conference Allstate in the Wind Ensemble, also on French horn. Please come forward if you're recognized. Next, I would like to call up Brig Lieberman. He has been accepted as an alternate into the Allstate Vocal Jazz Ensemble.
Another picture?
And the last student who is not able to be here this evening, unfortunately, is Jaden Hunkins, who is accepted as an alternate on tuba. So those are the members of Conference Allstate. And, please also note that their teachers are here this evening, Mr. Drew Rebeki, who is the band director at the high school. And we've already met Ms. Danielle Rousa, who is here in multiple capacities this evening. Teacher for Brig Lieberman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the North Syracuse Junior High, is the building planning team, so when you are...
Trying to think back to last year, and I think we presented after the kids. And so, I want a petition that next year, we don't present after. I'm Naomi Treverson, I'm the very proud principal at North Syracuse Junior High. And I have with me my building planning team, which consists of Nicole Brown, and Kelly Mullen, Melissa June, and Chuck Yanko. And a million other people who could not be here tonight, but their hard work will speak for itself. as far as demonstrating skills and ability to perform at an extremely high level. And we have four students that will be recognized tonight for achieving what is the highest level within the state, which is being accepted into Conference All-State, which is sponsored by the New York State School of Music Association, also better known as NISMIA. These students have been working for years to get to this level, often, the high school is the place that all eyes look, but as we know, education is a K through twelve process, and the teachers that have come before them have put them into great positions, and given them the opportunities and skills to be able to achieve at this high level. So, this evening, I would like to recognize four students, as I said earlier, three of them are able to be here this evening, and we do have certificates, so when I call your name, please come up and be recognized, Abigail Gable, who is performing in the symphonic band at Conference All-State on French horn. Congratulations, thank you. Next, Christian Record, he will be performing at Conference All-State in the Wind Ensemble, also on French horn, please come forward if you're recognized. Next, I would like to call up Brig Lieberman, he has been accepted as an alternate into the All-State Vocal Jazz Ensemble. And the last student who is not able to be here this evening unfortunately, is Jaden Hunkins, who is accepted as an alternate on Tuba, so those are the members of Conference All-State. And please also note that their teachers are here this evening, Mr. Drew Rebeki, who is the band director at the high school, and we've already met Ms. Danielle Rousa, who is here in multiple capacities this evening, teacher for Brig Lieberman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, next we have the North Syracuse Junior High is the building planning team, so when you
Trying to think back to last year, and I think we presented after the kids, and so I want a petition that next year we don't present after. I'm Naomi Treverson, I'm the very proud principal at North Syracuse Junior High, and I have with me my building planning team, which consists of Nicole Brown, and Kelly Mullen, Melissa June, and Chuck Yanko, and a million other people who could not be here tonight, but their hard work will speak for itself.
Hey, obviously, we're presenting for the junior high, our BPT Board Presentation for 2013. Beautiful picture of the junior high.
And we are really working towards, when you walk into the junior high, we want you to know that you're there, so we've been using some AI tools to help us kind of fancy up the place, hopefully this Christmas, we'll have some vinyl put up and around, so when you walk through the building, you won't have to guess where you are, or even what district you're in, you'll feel like you are welcome to the North Syracuse Junior High, and this is one of our mockups, and then hopefully if you all come visit next year, you'll start to see some of those pieces all throughout the building to kind of mark it as our own.
Okay, one of the things you'll see up on this slide is a comparison of our last year demographics compared to this year's demographics. As you look through, you'll see some slight decreases in the number of student enrollment and student staff, but you'll obviously see as you look at the twenty-five, twenty-six years, some additional increases in terms of the number of students with IAPs, the big number there that obviously you see the jump with almost five percent is free and reduced lunches, the number of students in our building. You'll also see somewhat of a sizable increase in our E&amp;L students, the difference between our transient students between last year and this year, and then obviously, if you look at the bottom, is the number of special programs we have with the students' numbers, depending upon the program you're looking at, they're up a little bit, or they're down a little bit, just a comparison of last year to this year in terms of the demographics at the junior high school.
Okay, so our goal by the end of, our SMART goal by the end of this school year is to have outcomes, and we're going to be doing this by data-driven process through the MTSS, which consists of and they meet weekly, we're made up by content and grade level, and during materials such as our AIMS web scores, our Common Assessments, we talk about best practices to adjust our Tier One instructions, and identify students needing additional support. As SST is kind of kicking off in the district, it's newly implemented at the junior high, we have teams split by alpha, just due to the size of our student population, and where we start to notice that students are struggling in that Tier One, we now have a system in place to look at not only behavioral struggles, but as well as academic, where we can get together as a team of different leaders and just kind of different brains all together at the table to find some strategies and ways that we can help all students reach that Tier One and find success.
Mentioned our collaborative team meetings, where our goal is to review data and implement appropriate interventions to assist all of our students. We do work weekly in our departments, we talk about Common Assessments, their student data, we have had a really strong push on working on reading. Later in the presentation, you'll, you'll see the reading goals that we are concentrating on. We have changed our CTM schedule in which different departments meet on different days, so we're all more available for kids, instead of just doing it all on one day. And we are really, our, our guiding coalition is working hard on trying to drive what we are doing within our CTMs to increase our reading scores and our interventions for all students.
One of the things we'd like to obviously see in our building, even though we are a junior high school, we are an eight and nine junior high school, as you all know very well, ninth grade starts off our, our students' path on high school, we would like to see at least eighty percent of our students leaving the junior high with a minimum of six and a half high school credits, the goal certainly is, is to have at least one world language credit, have credit in art or music, credits in the big five core classes, excuse me, math, science, ELA, global history, and PE, and then also look at the promotion of civics, facts, and technology in order for those students, as they leave the ninth grade and head up to the high school, have those six and a half credits, and obviously, we'll be looking at report cards and transcripts for those students.
I'm happy to report that we hit our goal for chronic absenteeism last year, our deans worked really hard over the summer, looking at student records, bringing in families, calling the families that we already had data on that, you know, they knew that they could probably end up on our list, and we did small group tours, we did guidance counselor tours, we just tried to really connect all summer versus just, you know, we'll see a day one and hope for the best, so we were happy to see that we met our goal last year, so we're gonna drop it again, and continue doing a lot of the things that we're doing, especially now with the implementation of SST in there, more restorative practice, our deans did again the summer work of getting families in, so we'd like to see that number keep going down.
We did not include discipline last year, but we thought that this was important to highlight, especially because it's one of the places we're seeing some huge success. Our deans, the counselor team, the admin team, and really all of the teachers are working a lot harder on pairing the teach part of discipline with the consequent piece of discipline, so that we see continued changed behavior. So you can see over just the course of one year, we decreased each month by almost thirty or more discipline referrals, and you can see this year, we're already on track to do the same, if not more, you can see the decrease in October, of almost well, math is not my forte, you guys will learn, I was an English teacher, but Chuck will tell you. Right, you know, from two seventy-seven to one eighty-one, and so we're, we're seeing just a lot of positive things, we're also talking to the kids a lot about what it means to be a junior high school student, and they're part of that community, we only have them for two years, but we don't want them to feel like it's a blip on the screen, and we don't want families to feel like it's just something they have to get through, we really want them to feel like they're part of what's going on at the junior high, and so the change, the changes that are happening are with their support, one of the things that Mal mentioned was the, using the AI to kind of rebrand the building, and that came out of Principal's Cabinet with kids, and they walked to the building and told us, you know, like, my grandma says this was hanging up when she went here, and it's like, oh, okay, great, you know, so the history is important, right, because walls tell stories, and so we want them to tell our kids stories, right, so this is just a testament to all of the hard work happening with the adults, the students, and the families in the building.
Okay, so reading proficiency, last year, only the eighth grade took the AIMS Web, this year is going to be a little bit different, because ninth grade will also take it for fall and spring, so our our charts will look a little bit differently this year, but we are hoping to continue to see that proficiency. We hit our goal last year, so we're gonna keep pushing it, especially if our building is focusing on reading, not just our ELA teachers, we really kind of want to push ourselves and really make it a team effort. Our ELA proficiency, we obviously know we need to do some work there, which is what's driving the guiding coalition, which is driving the CTMs, which is driving the SST and the support, and the family support, so with all of these pieces together, we really hope to see that we can raise that proficiency this year, and then keep it going each year till we get to where we feel good about what our kids can do.
We're also on track to meet our AIMS Web math proficiency goals, again, we see the same type of decrease in our New York State Math A proficiency scores, but we recognize between last year and this year, increasing in the, in the amount of reading, not just the New York State test for eighth grade, but all of the region's exams, and so it's becoming more, much more of a, can we read and understand the task that's in front of us? Can we produce something with the information that we have inside of our heads, and can we put that on a piece of paper, and so we're trying to get all three of those pieces in what the kids are learning in school, the eighth grade team had actually approached me and Nick Scholes at the end of last year, and had asked if we could look at a informal eighth grade math process, and if you know the courses offered at the junior high, we have an informal algebra class, which kind of gets kids ready for taking the region's level algebra course once they enter the high school, and and everything that I've looked at, and all the research that I can put into my brain, I do not see anywhere where slowing material down has supported students' growth. And if we slowed eighth grade down even more, it would push our ninth graders back even further, and I don't think that's where we were headed, so Nick and I looked at, like, what are they really asking us, and they were asking us for more time, so we have three teachers this year, teaching in a three-day math model, and they're having some great success with students across ability levels, it's a truly proportioned group of students, we have our advanced level students taking the Algebra One course, so they're of course not part of that model, but in the eighth grade, they have Math for Mastery, and they do have that extra time, and so we're hoping to see continued increases come out of that, not just of students passing the exam, but being proficient, and that's an eighty-five or higher.
So our reading and math goals for this year is to create, increase all students' proficient and advanced levels by six percent. Some of the strategies we plan on using that are, there's implementation in both the eighth and ninth grade ELA and math courses, ELA has EL Education and Math Five, we, as the guiding coalition, read all the reading standards, essential reading standards applicable mostly to the junior high student, and we have integrated those across all content areas, ICANN statements are placed within all classrooms each day for the learning outcomes for the day. Math workshop on top of the Math for Mastery that Naomi had just S level called Power Up, and we offer math help every BD day, so four out of the eight blocks, it is offered. We, our measurement tools to achieve these goals are our AIMS Web bus scores, the ELA and math assessments, and region's exams.
Just to give a little bit more to what Kelly was talking about, Fuzzy's plan, I think it's yours, Chuck. So, this summer, when our guiding coalition got together, we knew that our focus was going to be on reading, so we used the literacy briefs, and we used the standards that were given there, and we did really big deep dives into all of the region's exams, as well as the state assessments, and we even mixed it up, we had English teachers analyzing science exams, and really kind of opening our eyes to how much reading and writing, and the ability to have to bounce between the two, and the stamina that's needed, and, and all these pieces that we then use to see our kids succeed, and we developed our essential reading standards. And it was a pretty fun process, I think, that we did, because we had a lot of voices, we had all content areas represented there, and now through guiding coalition, similar to what we do in our CTMs, we start to focus on a few at a time, and really start to assess where our students are, so we just did some activities in the last few weeks, looking at I believe it was one-four, and then the writing standard, five, and just kind of practicing, how do we build and make sure that we're explicitly teaching reading? Even though I'm an art teacher, I'm teaching reading, I'm a music teacher, I'm teaching reading, I'm a PE teacher, but I teach reading, and this has been a really great way to kind of drive that, and all have a common goal.
Okay, what you'll see up here is our twenty-four, twenty-five regions exam data from last year, kind of goes in, in part at least with the earlier slide that I described in terms of the number of credits that we'd like to see the students have, as they go up to the high school. These are the results again, from last year's regions for the regions exams that we offer within our building, Algebra One, Geometry, and then the three sciences that, that are currently offered in the building, Earth and Space Science, Physics, Life Science, Biology, and you can also see the number of students that are, are participating in and taking those particular regions exams.
Okay, our BiMass data, so we give BiMass twice a year, we do fall and spring, and it's an assessment for our emotional commoncies, so our behaviors, our thoughts, our more personal feelings, and we focused last year on responsible decision-making, and it's really awesome to see our numbers change, so we kept just that eighth grade cohort, so you could see last year, our responsible decision-making, we wanted that to go up, and we went from very strong nineteen percent to thirty-two percent, and that speaks to the adults and the counselors, and the work we do in our building to connect with kids, to teach kids to be able to think things through, and really develop how they think, and if you look up at the higher risk, we went from thirteen percent to five, and I think that that's pretty awesome, so the fact that we had the cohort to look at, we felt was important, this year, we now give it to eighth and ninth, so the chart on the right is where we are at with the building as a whole for the responsible decision-making, and we'd like to continue to do that work and see those numbers increase as we do things and pair up with our social workers, our counselors, continue with Tier One, our restorative practice, we have Liberty in our building, we have access, we have NSGHS Connect, where it's teachers who have students stay after school and do different activities, and we continued the embedding of restorative practices in our ISS procedures, which I think speaks highly to the amount of referrals that have dropped, because we're learning from our behaviors, we are doing repair, and we're seeing a lot less of that repeated behaviors, and we're going to continue to do this work and keep growing those numbers.
So the last slide speaks about some of the celebrations that we've have at the junior high, not going to read them all to, you guys can do that, but I think my opinion of some of my favorite is, we have so many different clubs and opportunities for kids that are interested in different things, I also, my, my biggest favorite is having Nellie in our building, that's our therapy dog, that's there every, I start every morning with a little love from Nellie, but to see the kids come in, and greet her, and smiles, just to see her each day is great. A group of us had the opportunity to learn more on restorative practices, we were, we went to Rochester to a training, and we are now bringing a lot more of that into the school, which has also been something that I'm pretty proud of our building for.
Okay, so for me, this year, I've decided all about positivity, so I'm in, all in the positive postcards, positive emails, positive phone calls, and I think we're kind of trying to spread that throughout the community, positive instead of Talk the Walk was always a good thing to see, and, well, we've talked about the decline in different things, dogs, they're just fantastic. I, I just got two puppies, they're coming next Friday, I thought you should know that too. Four BD productions, always great.
I think it's pretty obvious, my favorite part is Chuck's suit. Done and done, his Christmas suit.
There's obviously a lot of different things going on, many of you have been around the district for, for a number of years, and the junior high has, has always had a kind of a namesake to it. I've been there for, I think, nineteen years now, and I can tell you definitively, every one of those is, is false, the junior high is a, is a wonderful place. Many, many, if not, the vast majority of our students enjoy coming to school every day, we see it in the number of students that are talking with our colleagues in the hall, the number of students that stop down in the office, not for discipline reasons, not because they need to pick up an award, but just stop down to say a hi to a, a staff member, or some of the people you see here. And I think that's what makes those lasting memories for students, you know, we talk about, I don't remember a lot of names, and I don't remember a lot of the, the math problems, but I remember the teachers, and I remember the individuals that, that really stuck out many years ago, I'll leave it at that, so, and that's really what we want to, to promote at the junior high, a memorable place for our students.
We changed the welcome back format this year, we did an ice cream social, it's the middle of the summertime, and poor Chuck was melting over the hot dog grill. So, we got through, we actually probably had twice as many people, so next year we have to count, because we also asked the students to come and try their lockers, and just gave it a different spin, right, they're junior high school students, and we were kind of micromanaging that process for them, so we saw some great success out of that, Guiding Coalition is doing amazing things, and they're moving fast, which is not typical for a guiding coalition, so the team has come together So the team has come together amazingly well, and they truly want to do great things. Just come see the things they're doing, it's just wonderful. Student collaboration with the elementary schools was able to be brought back. So our FAC students go and meet their elementary cohorts. And they are told a story about a monster, and then they get a drawing of that monster, and they have to plan it and draft it and sew it and bring it back to the kids at the end of the session. And so they've had a lot of fun with that. And I think it's good for the kids to see the connections between the community. Principal's cabinet wanted to rebrand the junior high, and I'm sad that they aren't going to get to see the fruits of their labor, but we are hoping to have everything up when we come back from December break. And so I invite everybody here to come back and invite the kids that planned this because it's going to be awesome. And we're using the new lettering that Lori Cook worked out for the district. So that'll be awesome, too. Their words, when they talked to us about it, was, "We don't understand why the junior high has such a bad rap." We're like, neither do we, so let's start changing it. They planned Teacher Appreciation Week, from handwritten thank you notes from students to individual teachers, to a pop-in popcorn thank you at the end of the week. And they really had a good time with that. And I just want to, last year I did this presentation and I knew nothing, right? I didn't know any of my teachers, really. I didn't know these two. Chuck wore that suit, and I thought, oh, he wears this every year. And I found one of the teachers, and they're like, "We have never seen that suit." So then I went, and if you know, Sierra, his daughter, subs for us sometimes, and she's wonderful. So I went and found her, and I said, "Sierra, tell me about this suit." She's like, "Neily, none of us knew about this suit." So I think it just speaks to like, the community that we're working to build. And I am incredibly proud of my team. So kudos to the deans, the social workers, the counselors, and most importantly, the teachers and the families and the kids who work together with us every single day to make the junior high the amazing place that it is. Thank you.
Questions, and I have a couple.
Oh, go ahead, sure, Paul.
Because I never get to.
Age before beauty.
Well, just, I just wanted a clarification. You had talked about on the collaborative team meetings for department, you mean by department. So you're meeting by grade? Subject area?
Oh.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just, the Regents' data, I just. Slide fourteen. What is a typical grade level that each of those? There is one, I think, I know there. Algebra I is given at, well, ninth grade. A science looks like most.
That's the accelerated eighth grade and the ninth grade. And physics is the accelerated ninth grade. Life Science Biology tends to be our tier three.
Lastly, I just wanted to echo your comments you made at the end. Somebody who taught at this grade level for a lot of years. Iverson, I want to say that right. My name's butchered all the time, so I get a pass here.
It's okay. I've renamed my paths. I'll answer most things.
Just, I appreciate those comments, I think it's important to hear.
Yeah, I kind of want to echo some of that. I mean, the data here really does speak for itself. It, very rarely do we up here see the huge difference when we're looking at the social, emotional competencies, right? I mean, we're talking about a difference of almost fifteen to twenty percent in the red and yellow in just one year. And I think also, you know, we all are looking at the data, right? You can very much look at the fact that the restorative practices have led to six hundred less referrals and that people are doing more, you know, they have more competencies in the, you know, responsible decision-making. So I think all of that together really shows that the culture that you're leading and that the team is putting together is really making a difference. And I just want to say thank you, because I know that, like you said, the building gets a bad rap, but this is really impressive stuff. So thank you for everything you all are doing.
I want to echo Josh. My kids went through the junior high several years ago, and already you guys have done such awesome stuff. Again, the data speaks. One quick question, I am assuming, like with the BIMAS, the high risk with self-awareness, that's probably similar across the state, right? I feel like that age group, because twenty-five looks big, but I'm assuming just that age group doesn't have. But what you guys have done, it's just amazing. You so much, you guys have done a lot.
Thank you, we'll see you next year.
Okay.
Again, I thought. What I was thinking is high school, Miss Hill.
There you go, okay. Good evening. I don't like microphones, my staff will tell you that. I'm Kristin Hill, I'm the Executive Principal of CNS. Before I start, I want to thank the junior high as a former employee. They left, but I appreciate all the work that they're doing as ninth graders, our high school students, and they're working on getting them ready to come up to the high school. So I appreciated hearing their ideas and all the growth that they're showing. So I have Greg Broton with here with me tonight, and Jackie Hayman, they are members of our BPT. And behind me, my admin team, Damon Villneve, Heather Pukta, Anne Lorenzini, and Kim Rice. So they get to sit back and watch, and we will do the talking. But we'll start with our building demographics. If you look on the right of our current enrollment, our enrollment has gone down this year, about sixty-three students. Along with our enrollment decrease, we have a staff decrease, a couple of staff members. We did not fill a few positions this year. Our special programs have stayed the same. We have still a skate in the building, and ours, I'm happy to announce, and you'll see this later, our skate classroom is immersed in some of our classes. So we see them around the building, which is great. Also, what's not on here, our ENL population is increasing, and we're expecting an increase again next year with numbers coming up from the junior high school. Our free and reduced lunch percentage has gone down a little bit. And our transient student population is on here. We've lost a little bit more than we gained last year, but we're holding steady. What is also not on here, I'd like to highlight, we do have many, many students, Mr. Crabtree will appreciate this, who attend our BOCCE, CTE, and New Visions program, both during their junior year and senior year. And those numbers are increasing every year, too. They have great programs there, and our students really, really enjoy those programs.
Good evening, everyone. Here we have our CNS building mission and vision. This hasn't changed since last year, so I won't bore you with reading through it. But just know that it's focused on the district's strategic plan, also dealt dealing with student growth and inclusion within the building. One of the big things we're trying to do is to build that sense of community in such a large building that's broken out in different floors, for those of you that have all been there, trying to make it, you know, a little bit smaller, you know, one student at a time.
We'll get into our goals for this year. Last year, we focused on our collaborative teams, and those are up and running. Our collaborative teams and our guiding coalition are stronger than ever. They're doing some great things. So this year, we changed our focus to MTSS. So we are focusing on our student support team. We've always had meetings, they call them house meetings, but we're really following the MTSS handbook that the MTSS committee and the district guiding coalition created. And we want to ensure that one hundred percent of our SST meetings result in documented interventions, leading to some implementation of supports for our students that we identify for, that who are at risk. So Mr. Villneve actually runs our MTSS meetings along with the principal in charge of each house. They, we meet once a month by house, so we have three meetings a month. Obviously, we're a large school, we need to divide that up. Each meeting includes the house principal, Mr. Villneve, the social workers of that house, the school counselors in that house, a nurse, the school psychologist, and our deans. So they meet and they look at student data. Sometimes students are put onto these meetings just based on academic data. We see discipline data. But this year, we started asking our teachers to complete forms if they wanted to add a student to SST. So student, or excuse me, teachers are sending us names of students along with interventions that they've already tried. And they're really looking at each individual student, focusing on what can we do to help these students? What can we do, whether it's social, emotional, academic, obviously, to help them graduate? We have a master document of every student who has been referred. And at this point, I believe we are up to one hundred and twenty-six students. And this was a couple of weeks ago. We just are on our third monthly meeting for this month. So about one hundred and twenty-six students, and we'll keep adding students as they come to our attention. And along with that, our goal is to increase our graduation rate. Personally, I would like every student to graduate from CNS on cohort. At this time, we are just focusing on a one percent increase. If you look at our data, we have held study rate around ninety percent. The state rate is eighty-six percent, so we are above the state graduation rate, which is great. But some of the strategies, obviously, our SST team is meeting. In addition to that, we do have contact in the building, and we have two Liberty Resource worker, social workers. We have a variety of clubs and activities to keep kids grounded in school. We have classes to prepare students for after graduation. I know last year, we talked about Adulting 101. That's still a very popular class. We also have Independent Living and Financial Algebra that are popular classes. Like I said, BOCCE's and New Visions programs. We have many college credit classes. So not only are we getting kids to graduate, they're leaving us with college credits, which is great. At this time, we offer thirty-two classes that students could get college credit for. In addition to that, we have thirteen AP classes, which again, depending on their score on the AP test, they can get college credit. For students who are struggling, we do have Apex, a credit recovery and credit accrual program that many students qualify for. We have our College and Trades Fair in the fall, that already happened and was well-attended. And then we have a pretty active career center, who she's constantly bringing in not just colleges, but trades, too, and military. So students can see all different avenues after they graduate.
So our goal for our reading proficiency is pass rate by two percent. We usually have a pretty high pass rate on the English region. And we target through, well, we use AIS, English eleven, sorry. Literacy-based content across the area. Science is really literacy-based, the test, the new test is really a lot of reading and writing, so focusing on reading proficiencies. Working on vocabulary and the guiding coalition, I mean, we just talked about in our meeting today about doing, we're starting to implement some PD on Thursdays in addition. So that just like, not only impacts our English Regents' Exam across all content areas. If we look at our Ames Web data, we're looking to increase. We are currently, the English Regents are performing higher than our OCMBOCCE's counterpoint in our region. We're scoring ninety-one percent in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Are giving the Regents' Exam in January this year? I'm a little stressed as an English teacher, but it's going to be all right. We know that the English exam is changing in June, and we have not seen it. So to give our kids the best fighting chance, we are going to give them the exam in January, because that is the exam we know we can prepare the kids for. And that way, they have a second.
It's me. So here we have our math proficiency goal. Our CNS goal is to increase math scores by two percent on the Geometry and Algebra II Regents' Exams. Those are the two math exams that are primarily given in the high school, both through the use of CTMs and looking at student data on, you know, shared comment assessments and Tier One strategies throughout the classrooms. Some of those Tier One strategies we have are, you know, with AIS workshops. Our math CTMs, again, are meeting weekly and going through their data from each of their exams. Again, just similar to the junior high school, they are by content, well, by course level, basically. So Geometry CTMs, Algebra II CTMs, so on and so forth. We do offer math help in the morning each day from seven fifteen to seven thirty-five for students to get extra help before their day starts, and also referencing students into those SSTs, those student support teams. Up here on the board, we do have our Geometry Regents' Results and our Algebra II Regents' Results. We have them compared against the BOCCE's and the Region. Those geometry results on the left, we have an eighty-two, so we're significantly higher than the Region, with a mirrored image on the other side on the Algebra II, where we're slightly below the BOCCE's in the Region. One of the reasons that we believe in this sort of a jump here is we give our geometries to our juniors and the Algebra II to our sophomores. So when you think of the Region, the Region is flip-flopped from that. So if you think, you know, brain development, maturity, all those other pieces, spatial awareness, all those things that change through the course of time, a year at that age is a significant difference. So we're, in fairness to both of these charts, we're not necessarily comparing apples to apples. You know, on one chart, we're comparing juniors against sophomores, and the other one, we're comparing sophomores against juniors. So, yeah, so there we have that.
Our big focus this year with emotional competencies has really been on building relationships and building community. Our large school, as Greg said earlier, trying to make connections with every kid and let every child know, or every student know, that they have a place, that they belong in our high school. So really working on building relationships across the board. Some of the ways we've done that, obviously through our classes, Adulting 101, Independent Living, Ecology, all of these really great elective classes. We also have tons of clubs in the high school, something for everybody. Just today, I had like forty kids after school for human rights. There's always something going on and a space for kids to go to. We have the coffee cart through our special class. They roll up on Fridays during second block. The kids are, the past three classes I've had, coffee delivered. And it's so great to see the kids, all students, and it's really fun. We do the Rising Star Awards. And I really firmly believe that if students have strong relationships with their teachers, they will be willing to take risks in their learning and really build and grow and have more success in their learning across. We're lucky to work with Kristin, who emphasizes the necessity of community in our space, especially a large school, and to find space for everybody. We have great counselors, social workers, school psychologists, ADAPAP, contact resources, Liberty Resources. And I do think.
school psychologists, ADAPAP, contact resources, Liberty Resources. And I do think the SST monthly meetings will make a difference. I've talked to Mr. Vilnav as well about like the special ed overlap component and making sure all people are looped in. It feels really good to know that we have multiple eyes on kids that might not be making it. So if you take a look at our data for BIMAS, you can see that we're really are gonna be focusing on relationship skills, because that just sort of like spreads into everything else. If you are able to connect with others, other students, understand how other kids are moving through life maybe different than you are, and able to build listening skills and empathy, that is just gonna benefit the whole school. So that is our focus on reducing that 3% to 2%. But we've highlighted some celebrations on this page. Jackie and Greg both talked about a lot of celebrations. I would like to share with everyone, the start of our school year was probably one of the best starts of a school year I've seen in a long time. And this was coming after a summer of a lot of anxiety over the cell phones. We did a lot of planning. The students and staff were great. We're testing the waters now that we're, we're into the second quarter, but we just did a cellphone reset. That's going very well. But a couple of things I just wanna highlight here. We started our year up in the right-hand corner. That's a picture from the senior sunrise. That's been a great tradition that students love, and our staff really appreciates as well, seeing all of our seniors start the year. In the left-hand corner, that's last year's Paige's Butterfly Run, our donation to Paige's. This week is Spirit Week at CNS, and I know Paige's Pajamarama is at the end of the week that the district is celebrating. So that's exciting. Our student government's running strong. Our principal's cabinet, Bridget is on our principal's cabinet. That's going strong. Just to build some community, we have a student and staff trivia event this week. We did it last year. It was well-attended. Students and staff form teams. We meet up after school in the cafeteria, and Mike Bryson runs trivia for us. So if you've ever been to his trivia event outside of school, he did it last year for us. He's doing it again. We're hoping to do it again in the spring as well. I have Unified Sports on here. Our Unified Club is, is running strong. We've had kids go in the last month to two different events at other schools. There's also a picture of the new auditorium. It's a little grainy, but that's our Triumph induction. That was a couple of weeks ago. So all those students were inducted into the Triumph Music Honor Society. Obviously, our fall play that you saw, so we're bringing back the auditorium. We have a preview day for our students and staff. If they wanted to bring their glasses down, that's tomorrow. So we're very excited about that. And then right in the middle of this screen, this is our Rising Stars Cafe. So these are students from our self-contained classes, as well as some of our skate students. They come around every Friday. You can order coffee, tea, or hot chocolate from them. And they are the happiest bunch of kids serving coffee that I've ever seen, much better than Dunkin' Donuts. So our staff has bought, has great supporting them. And then on the right-hand side, together we are Stars. We are still going strong with our Rising Stars Award. These are based on our core values that students created last year with Principal's Cabinet. And currently, Principal's Cabinet, I believe tomorrow, hopefully, we are going to talk about how are we nominating teachers and staff for Rising Star Awards. So we have a lot of great things going on at CNS. These are just a very small piece of the highlight, but we wanted to share those things. And there are our BPT members. And then at this time, we will answer any questions you might have.
What's that acronym stand for?
You're going to test me right now. It's a, it's a behavior rating scale. So students self-assess. So our students, every fall and spring, take an assessment. It's, there's conduct. There, it's all social, emotional.
I could see that line of cause.
Yep. Yep. So at the younger grades, their teachers will do an assessment and starting, actually, the middle schools just started this year. I believe sixth and seventh graders are self-assessing. So they'll self-assess twice a year, all the way up through, our seniors don't do it, but our sophomores and juniors do it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Because for years, Ken, Sheri and I have talked, is that years ago, we gave, you gave, the English exam in January, and then most of the students passed, 90% passed. And then you could help those 10%. There's a gentleman, I can't think of his name, was awesome with that. He's the principal in Bevo right now, was awesome with that. So now you can work with those kids that don't do, are not successful in there. And I want to thank you personally. You do a lot for the club that you work with, and two of your students came to the Optimist Club the other night. Gee, I can't, we missed you. But the two of them were amazing. Our goal at the, to tell Kristen, our goal this year at Optimist, adult Optimists, is to bring your clubs to the adults and show them exactly what we're doing in, in the community. I do personally work with some of the students, and you have an amazing group of students up there. You've had for three years, who really give a lot to their community. They go beyond helping people. A group went up to the Military Courtesy Room on Veterans Day, met a Marine, and he couldn't believe these were high school kids and talking to them. So thank you for what you do up there. It's much appreciated.
I actually did have a question. You, you were talking to something, there was like some sort of credit for, it sounded like if there were students who had failed a class, they could take it again or something. I, I just was, and you may have talked about this next, last year, and I probably asked the same question, but if you could clear that up a little bit?
This is, this, yes, this is my wheelhouse. For the past few years, I've been working it in the summertime. Took the summer off, finally, Josh. Be proud of me. Took some time. So the credit accrual process, formerly known as, we use a program called Apex. What this, what this program is, it's for the students that don't qualify for summer school, and we want to keep them on cohort. So it's a computer, computer-guided course run through. So the students watch slideshow, take notes, take a, take a computer, you know, computer test. If they fail the quiz, then they get a reset, retake it again. If they fail again, then we get, we set individualized tutoring with them, one-on-one. We offer this course every block of the day, all the way through. Students can take everything. I think there's four different science courses, three different science courses. Actually, there's three different science courses on there, sorry. Four math courses on there, Global 9, Global 10, English 9, English 10. So basically, all this, you know, government, let's see, Big Economics, Global, I said, US History, everything's, basically, everything's covered. So if you, as a student, don't, this is during the day now. Yeah, we offer during the summer. And in the summertime, we generally try to catch mainly our biggest clientele are the, are the freshmen. The freshmen, trying to get them on, on pace, keep them in cohort when they're coming up from the junior high to the high school. So we have a lot of, we usually have about 35 to 40 students in the Algebra I course, with another probably 15 or so in social studies, in various social studies courses, another six to eight in the science courses. And in there, we also give them the lab minutes, if they're lab-deficient, to catch them up. I also do that during the school year. So I run a separate program within the Apex, sort of a subset, to get them lab credit. So we do a lot that we can to get the students through. And, and in that class, I gotta say, is one of the most beneficial one-on-one times. When you start to think of little wins, I have a, a young student in there, and she's having difficulty getting her work done, we'll put it that way. And she's been putting up wall after wall after wall, but I've, you know me, I finally chiseled the wall down. And so now we're on track with each other. So she's getting one unit done a day, all the way through. So if she keeps her, keeps, if she keeps her promise to me, she'll be done by January. So it took a little bit, but we got her going. So.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I don't usually say much, but it must have been like the three energy drinks I had this afternoon or whatever. I don't know, but my head's like scrolling through things. I mean, we're fortunate here, right, in this district that, and, you know, I'm using, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but you can literally point in that direction and hit a rock, right, throw a rock at another district or a college or university. With all that's going on, I can't believe your heads aren't like spinning at the high school. And more power to you. But do you ever have a chance to collaborate with the local school, other school districts and the colleges and universities around here, to help maybe fine-tune things or, or, you know, get in the groove of what's going on?
Yeah, I speak to the principals at Liverpool and Bowlinsville almost weekly. So we're always bouncing ideas back, back and forth. I also go to a monthly principals meeting at BOCs. That just started this month. So we had our first meeting. So there were principals, I think there were 12 principals there from around the, not just our county, there were some other counties there too. So it's great to hear what other schools are doing, even if they're much smaller than ours, which a lot are, to take an idea and figure out how we can do that at the high school, or vice versa. So, and then the colleges, we have with our, we meet with BOCs, or not BOCs, excuse me, OCC pretty regularly. Heather Pukta actually manages all of our college credit classes. So she is talking with them pretty regularly, regularly as well.
And I'll add that you're going to weigh OCC breakfast with the president of the college to talk about some of these ideas this week, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good. I mean, I just, I thought it'd be good for the.
I'm saying I can't get out of that.
It'd be good for the folks at, at home to know that we're just like, not an island amongst ourselves, right?
A lot of collaboration, which is great.
Thank you.
I just ask, let me get another clarifying question, because I'm listening.
Reset has been a, I, it's probably going to be coined as my word this year. We, after feedback from staff, we, there were some concerns that students maybe weren't following our policy and rules. So we did a reset. We had some videos. We had kind of a reset of our rules. So it's just teaching, reteaching, which we often have to do, even with high school students. You know, now that we're getting comfortable, we'll do it again after holiday, the holidays, just to remind them what our expectations are and what the consequences are.
I already have an Uno table sometime?
We already do. We, so in our lunches, we have carts. We have carts in each cafeteria. We, we've had this since the beginning of the year. It's one of the strategies. We knew that our students would struggle without their phones in the cafeteria. Some are still struggling. Ms. Lorenzini will tell you. But they play games. And I believe, I think Damon and Heather both were playing Uno at the beginning of the year. So even today, I walked in and there are kids, in more Cafet, Cafe One seems to be our gaming cafeteria, but there's games that they can get out and play. And Mrs. Rice, I believe, is working on some talking points to have cards at each table on Talking Tuesdays, to just get our kids, they're, they're talking, because the cafeterias are louder than ever, which is a great thing. But just a little bit more focused. So that's our reset.
I appreciate you being candid. Policy and whoopie do. Have the, the grade levels that are, you know, the age. Governor can pass a law. Other questions? Seeing none. Sit back there and watch the rest of this meeting. Okay, we're at the portion where we welcome comments from the audience. We do not have anybody signed up this week. I just encourage, again, anybody who would like to come and speak to the board. Sarah, and sign. Board of Education Committee reports. I will start with policy. Mr. Legislative, no report. Okay. Didn't finish asking, but thank you for being prompt.
Uh, thank you. Just a couple of quick things that you'll probably see maybe highlighted on our Facebook page this week. But I do want to thank Eric Smith for emailing me this note, and I thought I would share it with you. So Becky Jones and Eric took a group of Unified Club students to Kazonova High School for Unified Summit on Friday last week. And we have been named a New York State Unified Banner School. Unified Banner Schools have a Unified Club, participate in Unified Sports, and promote whole school engagement. Unified Clubs from CNS, Liverpool, Nottingham, Kazonova, ESM, and Chittengo were named. The mission of the Unified Club is to promote social inclusion and equity by bringing students with and without intellectual disabilities together in a variety of activities, including sports, social events, and school-wide initiatives. So yes, we've, we've had some unified participation, but now we are a banner school for Unified Sports. So I thought that was great to share. There'll be pictures on Facebook at some point this week about some of those things. Just one other quick thing. I, I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't mention it's American Education Week, you know, across the, across our country. And what I get to do each and every day is get to see people work super hard to educate kids, whether it's academics or social, emotional, or whatever, whatever they need. And, and we see it every day. And, so I just want to thank our staff from all of our buildings during this week, American Education Week. That's all I had.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferfale, Vice President Ferfale. I, I, first, I wanted to congratulate the boys volleyball team, of course. Dr. Leahy's son's on the team, as well as my nephew's on the team as well. But they won the sexual championship this past week. So a big congratulations to them. I also wanted to say, and I didn't know Paul if you were gonna talk about this or not, but we both had the opportunity to attend a fixed Tier Six rally. It was on the same day as Senator Ryan's event here. And, you know, I had to be there for work, and Paul was speaking. But I think it's important to highlight that, you know, at, at least I personally, and I hope everyone here is aware of the, the issues that a lot of our educators face with Tier Six and how high their contributions are versus what the payout ends up being, and to call on the legislature to fix that in the coming years. You know, our, our teachers and our staff do a lot. And, you know, there's, there's some things on the agenda tonight that I think are trying to, you know, help support our teachers and our staff, which I appreciate the administration in doing. But we have to continue, especially with budget challenges coming up, to make sure that, you know, everything that we can do to support our staff and continue to support the great work they're doing is possible. So just, just wanted to put that out there on everyone's radar.
Ash, you know what I'm gonna talk about first, right? What is Wednesday? BOCs vote. OCN BOCs vote, capital improvement project, 3.5 million from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. 65% of the cost is from state, 35% from the local school districts, which includes North Syracuse and 22 other school districts. As, I couldn't say it better, as our executive principal said, more and more students, our enrollment is going up, up, up in welding and engineering, and we need the space. So you can go vote. I know it's on your calendar, Josh, because you're tired of me saying it. You can go to Crown Road across from Amazon. You can go to the main campus off of Seventh North, or you can go to Thompson Road. So I was surprised you had your meeting last week, because I thought you was gonna have it this week, so you have to vote. Number two, and I mentioned this earlier, the utilization report is going to be given to the board shortly, as Dr. Ward has talked to us about. And I've started looking at it. It is a lot of information. So they're doing a really good job dabbing her group. Please look at it. So this is the first time since 1983, right, older than our new board member, I think, when we made some changes. So please do that. Senator Ryan was here. Bridget, you were there along. I want to thank Kristen for all the students that were there. And things that Dr. Ward and his group brought up, or a portrait of a graduate. Where are we really going with that? Kristen knows what I'm talking about. Tier Six was brought up, and I agree 100% with you. You were there. But Chris Ryan has said he wants it. Being a union man, the price rate now is really, really high. Talked about foundation aid, talked about cellphone policy, and that the New York State has a huge budget deficit. And what are we gonna do about it? But thank you, Bridget, for going to that. And you did talk about the policy with the cell phones. So thank you. I did get a chance to attend the Triumph. I think maybe because I wanted to see that auditorium. What a great, I've never been to that Honor Society induction, which was phenomenal, super event. And our high school band, I think, has doubled in size. They took up the flute and clarinet section was at the bottom of the stage. section was at the bottom of the stage. You know how big that stage is? And the rest of instruments, I can't even name. That is wonderful. That is wonderful. Boys volleyball, I know Dr. Ward was on the other side. I didn't get a chance to see him. What a great team effort. And Mike Lucia is a phenomenal, well, he's a phenomenal teacher and, and human person, but he seems to get that team at the end of the season up there, you know, and to beat Liverpool, you know. I had a chance to help send the girls off, the soccer girls, the girl soccer left at the same time as the volleyball. And there probably was 100 parents, including our new board member, who's really excited, and had an umbrella with her. I saw a video late at night. It was a drenching rain. They went two overtimes, and a former board member's daughter made the, the winning goal. And unfortunately, the next day, they lost two to nothing. But they made it to the finals, and they're a young team, want to be back. Nolan Zinsmeyer, who I know very well, was our runner, and went to the state finals and did, did a really, something in yesterday's paper. Young man, and I am not going to say it correctly. Mayor Haai, you know what I'm talking about, TESF, was nominated for the best and brightest award winner. And, you know, there were other high schools there, but I couldn't care less. I always look for CNS. His leadership, he was born in Ethiopia, and you can read all of this, faced a challenge of adjusting to his new country language in school. He is now a deacon at his church. He teaches Bible lessons, dedicated member and student leader in Lemoine. But he serves on our school's executive board, participates in student government, and holds a two-time jobs by having a strong academic record. That shows me, our students that are coming from other countries give us so much.
The other comment? Hill, it's all yours.
So as Ms. Hill mentioned, this week is Spirit Week, and at the end of the week, we have pages pajamarama. So I wanted to mention a couple of things about that. So pages pajamarama is 25% of their fundraising money comes from pages pajamarama. They do other events, like they do a butterfly run, they do all sorts of things. But their biggest contributor is this pajamarama event. All the kids come to school in PJs, and they donate money. You can donate online. There's a barcode on the student government Instagram. All these amazing things. And they don't just contribute to cancer research. They can, they help families get a place to stay while their child is going through cancer treatment. And they do all these incredible things. It doesn't just stop at research. And another great thing we have this year is we've reached out to, I believe it's over 50 businesses. We've, like, in Spears and North Star Nutrition especially, are very, they're participating in this, and, and it's great. So we're not just, it's not just our school community, it's our local community, too, that's really all coming together for this fundraiser. And I know last year, we, I, I could not find the number, but it was just an amazing amount of money that we, yeah. There's $16,000. And it was just, it was amazing. And it's great to see us come together as a school like that, to really support a great cause. So,
All right, moving on to routine action items. I'll look for a mo- Second. Another discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. Like to take items B and C together, if I get a motion. Horn. These are the consideration and classification of placement. And C are before us. None, all in favor. Pose, and those are carried. Alleged from the business office reports for August of 20- Button. Question there. None, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried, and declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus. Mr. Schuster, thank you. All right. Question. All in favor. Question, action items. We'll look at number A first, if we get a motion. First, Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Luden. That is before us, is the amendment to our Board of Education Pose, and that is carried. Resolution now, B. Motion, put that before us. Mr. Luden, second. Okay, that is before us. That is for-
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that I think that this is really important, and this is something that I've already echoed. But I think it's important that in the times that we're in, where there is a lot of seemingly random violence, and there's also a lot of motivated violence as well, that we are, you know, really taking the next step to make sure that all of our students, all of our staff, and any, everybody who is involved with something on district property is, their safety is a top concern. So I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Ward, the administration, for doing this.
First, any other comment? And all in favor. Pose. Carried. Have a resolution to create and abolish position of Smith. Vote, get a motion to put that- Horn. Okay, that is before us. We are adding a teacher on special assignment and creating a one- And all in favor. Okay, resolution D. I'd like to put together, because these are authorizing this district to execute. Several discussions in Friday letter about these. So a motion, please, but D, second from-
I'll second it, but I also has some-
Hey, Mr. Herman. So discussion on any of those four, or do you want to separate-
I don't know. Can we put this in a nutshell for everybody at home?
Sure.
I mean, if they're-
Thank you.
Yeah.
So as you're probably aware, the DOT has been working on roads around here. And in connection with that, they have taken certain portions of our property through eminent domain, very small segments of roadside. And, and when they take property through eminent domain, they're, they will pay us for that property. And so these are the documents that allow us to get paid, the sums of money, which roughly are about $62,000 for these par, small parcels.
Thank you. I've, I've just, I personally never seen this before, and I don't think people at home see the same documentation that I see. So thank you very much.
Other comments or questions? Are in front of us. Seeing no further questions, all in favor. Pose, and those are carried. Thank you. Acknowledgement of appointment of our Southern New York School Board Association Board Director member. Motion, put that before us, please. Motion. Second from Mr. Thorne. Discussion there. This is our own Mr. Crabtree, who's being appointed, I believe, right? So we want to make sure we're all going to attend that function. We're voting to, we're voting to accept it or acknowledge it, basically. Yeah. Yes. All in favor. Pose. That is acknowledged, carried. And again, we're going to do another acknowledgement of the retirements, where we always put a motion. That's a motion for this one. Donald, thank you. And our retirements, we have Mark Adamski, music teacher retiring with 29 years of service. Mary Gilmore, mathematics teacher retiring with 22 years. Teacher retiring with 29 years of service. Taking a hit. Like to wish them all a happy and long- service. Favor? Acknowledged and carried. Instructional personnel report, A. Like, motion, place that before us. Motion. Button. That is before us. Is there any discussion or need for executive session? None, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. And support staff report, B, a motion to place that before. Herman. That is before us. Any discussion? All in favor. Pose, and that is carried. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session. There one parental appeal, and we'll come back in with no, with action to follow on that. I get a second for that? Mr. Thorne?